Okay, so here we are. Let's review and approve the minutes. So I had just one, one thing on on number three, it says, does the GM meeting room have a conference call? I would like that to be spelled out to George Mason Library Meeting Room.
Okay.
That's all I had. Anybody else had any have anything? No?
Nope.
So we have a motion to approve.
So move.
Okay. We're done with that. Okay, so let's just move on. Does anybody have anything to say before we move on to Policy W?
Nope.
Gary, would it be helpful? Oh, Sheila, you got Gary's suggested revisions, right?
No, I don't.
Okay.
I've been out of the loop since we were, since we went over to that. I did not, I confess, I did not go do it right. So I've been out of the email. So if they came recently, I haven't been able to get into email.
Um, well, Gary sent a revised idea of the Policy W based in kind of, it's like a holistic revision. So I thought maybe it'd be helpful for him to talk about that before, just as a jumping off.
Should we go on bullet by bullet? Or should we do it? Because I have a few too. Or should we just do it kind of en masse? Gary, what would you like to do?
It doesn't matter. I I did a complete rewrite.
Okay.
Well, a complete reorganization because you kept a lot of the text, you just organized it differently.
Right. Now, why don't we, why don't, why don't you tell me about, let's, let's talk about it first and then we can decide how we're going to, because I have a few things too. And we might be talking about the same things.
Well, I guess there were two things. I combined all the different exterior properties under one rather than breaking out the parking lot. And mainly because I thought that section three, we're in section three, we're directing customers to do certain things. And I don't think we have that authority. We can direct how our property is to be used. And so rather than having the section three, I brought those exterior places in with the parking lots.
I think that's a good idea.
So where is Gary, where is your draft? Did that come around and I don't, didn't see it?
Yeah, I didn't get it either.
Well, Fran and I
Who's got the draft? Can we share it on the screen?
Fran and I were talking back and forth, but we sort of came to conclusion with a little help from our friends that if we included more than two of us, we were breaking the law.
Yeah, no, 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 I get it. No, this is good. This is good. This is fine. So the grounds, exterior plazas and gathering places. Okay.
Okay, so this is your, this is your rewrite. Is that right?
Yes.
Right. Yes.
Okay. Okay.
So you just took what we already have and moved it around?
Pretty much. I changed some of the wording, but basically that was it. I have a couple concerns even with what I've done. One is, you see, I include grounds, parking lots and so forth together. And then in B, I talk about parking lots, and that's really redundant. But I was concerned that that's going to be probably 90% of our problem. And it might be good to break it out so that it's clear we're talking about commuters and overnight, basically.
Okay. Okay, which is, could I just see the rest of it? Or is that the whole thing? Okay. I have another concern. I'm having a lot of trouble with the camping part of it. I made a list of the different things that happen in parking lots that aren't addressed. And I was wondering what the background is for taking part camping and making it the bulk of this or such a large part of this policy. Christine, do you know the background of this?
I think this is where we, this is the place where we address, you know, ground, use of the grounds, and we do have a significant small but significant camping issue at branches. So is camp, does that answer your question?
No, it doesn't. Camping, is this a criminal activity? Is the, what is, how is this different from overnight camp, overnight sleeping? Is this an overnight sleeping problem? Why is camping given such a large part of this? Is it criminal?
Yes. Sheila, I remember when the Board of Trustees was discussing this issue. And part of it was the parking, parking garages that became an issue because it was like a shelter, you know, more of a shelter than say a parking lot. But
You're talking about Fairfax City. What other car parking garages do you have at this point? It's just that one, one library?
Actually, I guess if it's my memory, it must have been an outdoor thing. But I, and I, I do remember especially that part with, I remember we had somebody at, when that was when I was in Arlington though, but it was still an issue that he had a refrigerator box set up in the, in the yard to, and lived in it. And so it's just, you know, it's not something you can have.
Herndon also has a parking garage.
Garage there too. Yeah. And they share that with the, isn't there a board of
Municipality.
It's an air or something there.
Yeah.
Who shares the space? Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. I probably am going to be odd man out on this, but I just want to, let me just tell you what I'm thinking. In the, you know, I probably worked at some point in half of the branches in Fairfax, Fairfax County from my home in Reston to Ho Hick and a lot, you know. And there are various situations that happen in parking lots. At what library I worked at, there was a school dropout off daily, which created a lot of problems because the pickups, the parents parked in the the fire lanes blocked the entrance for, you know, 15 or 20 minutes every afternoon. There were two or three buses that came in and did that drop off. This been
Was that a permitted use?
No, I don't think so. I mean, I've never seen anything since I've been on the board of making.
I mean, it just seems unlikely that a school would have a drop off in a library parking lot and not have cleared it without
Well, I'm just telling you what happened. And it was, it was obstructing the entrance and it was in a fire lane. That's one thing. Campaigns, there are farmer's market. We have people who smoke and don't follow those rules. There's panhandling. There are all kinds of things that that happen in parking lots that I'm not saying that that we shouldn't have something, but I just wonder why camping, which is not against the law, it is maybe antisocial in some ways. But we go into saying, I mean, if a person needs a newspaper to keep themselves warm, I don't see why that needs to be in our policy. I think that if we don't want people sleeping overnight, yes, we should put that in. But I just find it, we're targeting one pop, one part of the population right now. And especially in this, in this climate, we do have people who have been evicted from their houses. We have mentally ill people, the, the shelters are overrun. The Reston Shelter has 70 beds. If they, if they're all full, where are the people going to go? I'm not saying that we should be inviting and encouraging camping, but I just, I find, I find it personally offensive that we spend so much of this policy on these details. I'm fine with overnight sleeping and overnight habitation. But I don't see the reason to be putting all of this stuff about sleeping outdoors and eating, erecting, and sleeping on newspapers and cardboard. I was in one branch where every Monday I was greeted with a big smile. Look, I found more cardboard outside. That's not what parent, that's not what our staff is paid to do. Go out and look for cardboard.
So Sheila, can I just ask you, so your concern, your concern is not with the specific prohibition of overnight sleeping or overnight habitation. You're not saying we shouldn't include that. You're just saying, you're just saying you don't want a big description of camping in the policy.
Exactly, exactly.
I mean,
It's, I looked on the internet. I looked through policies for Fairfax County. There's a lot about camping and camping is allowed in our parks and recreation places. And you know, there's a lot about it, but it just seems here it's, we're really targeting just one small population. And if it probably would, if it was an overnight sleeping problem, we would deal with it. We don't have to go into sleeping on newspapers.
Okay, so it's the language that's troubling you.
Absolutely. Yep.
I mean, overnight sleeping is pretty clear. So I suppose you don't have to define what camping is, but that the, the B is really about sleeping in a vehicle. So I mean, basically what you'd have is one paragraph that would say
No, it says in a vehicle. Oh, on the property.
Right. So A is on the property itself and B is about sleeping in a vehicle. So, I mean, I'm not really, I'm not, I'm not really troubled with the definition of camping, but on the other hand, overnight sleeping is, is encompasses, you know, camping. So but you could simply say overnight sleeping is prohibited on all property, including, you know, which includes sleeping in a vehicle, which is on the property.
Exactly. Because at the
Period. And you can have one sentence, I suppose.
Right. At the very top, would you go back? I can't really remember what the
Well, right there. I mean,
Okay, so it says grounds, exterior, don't it? All right. So parking lots are not included in that. Okay.
No, they, they, well, at the moment, it just says grounds, exterior plazas and gathering places. But then, but then so Gary, this is a little confusing because if you want this whole section to be about parking, if you want A, B, C, and D, and E to apply to all of these things, you don't need a number one. Well, you don't need a number one because your title is grounds, parking lots, exterior plazas, porches and gathering places. So you don't even need a one or a two because you're saying all of these things apply to all of these places at the moment. That's what you're saying. If you're not calling out a separate section on parking lots, and if you are calling it a separate section on parking lots, then you need to move C into the Well, I mean, I don't really care, but right, just in terms of organizing it, I'm not sure that this is clearer.
The way you really needs to have parking lots in the title and the
When, when I did it, I my preference would be to not even talk about the parking lots and the camping. But I did, I didn't think that people would like that because it wasn't clear enough in that the two real big problems we have are parking and the well, camping or whatever you want to call it. And, and so that's why I left that language in there. Not because I thought it was necessary, but I thought it would be desired.
Well, okay, so this is my, okay, can you just scroll down for a second? And then you have camping and is there a C enforcement? Okay. So what about if we just have two sections? We just have two sections, which the first section are, you know, the use, the use and restriction or, you know, permissible uses, permissible and impermissible uses of you know, everything that's in the title, grounds, parking lots, exterior plazas, porches and gathering places.
I forgot parking lots in there when I
Parking lots. Okay. And then, and then all of these things have to apply to all of those. So A would be um, A would be grounds, parking lots, external plazas, plazas, I don't know, porches really doesn't, doesn't need to be and gathering places are provided only for activities associated with the use of the library. Any other use of such property by individuals?
Well, porches needs to be there because it's in the title.
I'm not saying take it away. I'm saying don't capitalize.
Capitalize. Oh, thank you.
Any other use of such property
By individuals.
Is prohibited. You don't even need by individuals, not actively engaged. Just, you're saying library grounds, parking lots, exterior plazas, gathering porches, gathering places are provided only for activities associated with the use of the library. Any others, any other use of such property is prohibited, period. Then I would actually put, I would actually put there, put, have number, have the next sentence actually be this D, the library director may permit exceptions to the basic use. Actually, you know what? Just leave D for a minute. Okay. So then B would be, B would be commuter and overnight parking is not, I would have B be commuter and overnight parking is not, is prohibited in library parking lots. Period. And any other, well, you've already prohibited. And if you want to go on, you can say, you know, any, any other parking is prohibited. And you can have all the prohibited things. You could have overnight sleeping on the, well, no, that I guess that should be differently because overnight sleeping can be anywhere.
But this is everywhere too.
And overnight parking, well, you've already said overnight parking is prohibited in the library parking lot. If you wanted to be clear, you could say, you could say overnight sleeping in a vehicle is also prohibited in the parking lot. I mean, you've already got overnight parking, but I guess that doesn't include whether you're sleeping in the car at the same time.
Do you have to even say that?
I don't think you do.
Well, one could argue honestly, that if you're in your vehicle, you're not parking it, you're waiting or whatever. So
You could also be attending a committee meeting for a library board of trustees committee.
Overnight. Wow.
Well, Miriam's doing that right now.
Not overnight. Only, it's only, it's only prohibited if the meeting goes for the next 12 hours.
Don't tempt me, Miriam.
So if you want to keep it to the parking lots here, then I would say something like commuter overnight parking, this is like your parking lot issue. No, actually, just leave it like that. Commuter and overnight parking is prohibited in library parking lots, period.
Is there ever a time that we have things parked there? I don't know, county vehicles or anything? Or even our own people that would need to park there overnight?
Yes, but they would have permission from, you know, like, like the buses sometimes park there overnight. And they get permission from Jessica.
So that would be one of the waivers.
Yes, exactly.
Okay. So then I would make number C now, the thing about, the, the, the one about the camping that we're not calling camping. I'd have a new C that says, that says something like, the new C above would be overnight sleeping on the ground, on, on, on the grounds or on any library property, including sleeping in a vehicle is prohibited, period. Something like that. So that's your new C, maybe prohibited. And then, and then you have, let's see, so scroll down for a second again for me. Because don't you have an enforcement? Here we go. So you have an enforcement down here, which means scroll up, which means that this current, what's labeled as D is actually part of your enforcement section. I think. So you, if you moved that to your enforcement section, we can just put it anywhere and then we'll, then we'll edit. Okay. So now if you scroll up again, you can, so then, so then the new D and E are your exceptions. So the first three are your prohibitions. And then the next two are your exceptions. So the library director may be permitted exceptions to the, when you say the basic use policy, I think what you're actually just saying is may permit exceptions to the prohibitions listed above. I don't know what basic use. And may also enter to the, may permit exception for listed above, period. And then I'd start another sentence that says the library director may, may enter into agreements with other public or private entity regarding use of library property, library property, period. I don't think you have to say parking lots. Period. Yeah.
Yeah.
Take that out. I'd also take out the also, the also is not really relevant there. So library director may enter into agreement. So is it always the library director or can a branch manager make an exception or something? Because this, this limits it to the library director. So
Always the library director.
So if somebody wants to sell cookies, they have to come to Jessica?
They can't sell cookies on county property.
Okay. Okay. So it's always to the library director.
Yeah. And, and that's intentional to take the burden off of staff.
Okay, fine. All right. So then E, all exceptions or agreements regarding use of library property. Oh, that are applicable for six months or more required approval by library trustees. Do we want it, Sheila, what were you guys thinking about this? Do we want to?
Since I've been on the board, this has never come up.
It's never come up. So is this something we want to keep? Do we need to?
Christine, that's redundant.
Well, what, what usually happens is with things that we want to do, like we do have a bus that picks up and drops off at the Richard Byrd Library.
And great balls too, I think.
And we negotiate with them by semester because that keeps it within the six month time period. And it gives us the flexibility. It gives them a full semester. They know what to plan for. But if it becomes a problem, then we can just deny it, you know, if it starts blocking traffic or, or does something, you know.
So does it need to come to us though? Because
No, because we do it in a less than six month.
Okay, right.
So what we're saying to you is, do we eat, should we just delete E? Like library get director gets full control. It doesn't matter if it's six months or more. They don't have to ask the board. I mean, we've never, I've been on the board for six years. I've never
Yeah, I mean, I, my take on it would be if it's not broken, don't fix it. But you know, if you feel strongly about it, I can certainly look into it.
No, I mean, it's fine.
So happy to. Farmer's Market, it's not six months. Is that right?
The farmer's market, we negotiated with the county and I think you guys approved.
Oh, because that's a one time thing, not every year.
No, 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 it's, I mean, it's
The agreement, I mean.
Right.
Yeah. Okay.
Doesn't the city have an agreement with the library to use the parking garage? I know on, on, it's, it's there for city events after library hours, but that seems like a longstanding agreement. In addition, I know the city has parked vehicles in the parking garage when there's a snow emergency. Probably without running it by the director. But I'm not sure, Christine.
Right. I mean, we're not gonna, all of this stuff is, we would look at enforcement if and when we needed it. We're not, we're not out looking for problems in the parking lots, you know? This is, this is what the teeth that we have for when we need them.
Right. And I can think of times when an employee's car maybe is broken down in the parking lot or in the parking garage. And you just put a sign on your car in case the police come through.
Oh, absolutely. And that has happened to many, many patrons too. And they come in and they're really worried that we're going to tow their car. And, you know, we're not going to, they, they second, put a note on it.
Right. Yeah. Right. So we need to keep
So let's say we keep E then, then keep scrolling down here. So then all of section two disappears.
Well, I have a question. I have a question.
Sleeping.
I have, I have a question about the cooking and nothing. I mean, was that put in there because that actually happened? And if it does happen again, we don't have a, a policy to address it now if we take that out?
Well, you do because the upper above, it says, and you go back to number one, we're not spelling it out, but number one says provided only for activities associated with use of libraries. So I suppose if the library has a cooking demonstration, they can have an open fire in the plaza.
Oh, I think open flyers are something that is addressed by Fairfax County. I, I think that you know, open fires in, in campgrounds and, and their, and their parks, they don't allow them except where they have their own grills set up for people. And then they have to reserve the area. So
But what I'm saying is
It's covered.
We're not, we're not spelling specific things out anymore.
Right.
Theory. So, so in theory, if you do it this way, you would delete all of two.
And we've moved the overnight sleeping up.
It's already moved up. It's already up there. And then number, then three enforcement becomes two, number two enforcement. And then let's just see if these make sense now. So parking lot problems associated with, with parking lot problems. Parking lot problems shall be addressed. Or how about if you say it this way? Prohibited use of the parking lot, of the parking lot shall be addressed by the library director. Prohibited use of the parking, prohibited uses of the parking lots, period, or parking, yeah, parking lots shall be addressed by the library director by use of appropriate signage, police ticketing and or towing. The installation of gates and or other barriers and or other means. I, you, you actually can get rid of the slashes and the ors. I mean, this is just a thing that I have, which is you don't need and or you can just have and. These ticketing and towing, the installation of gates and barriers and other means. I mean, if you guys care, I'm Fran is the expert on all things.
No, no, I know. I like the way you clean things up.
So it, would it be prohibited use or prohibited uses of the parking? Prohibited uses
Or you slash uses. No, just kidding.
Prohibited uses, uses. Yeah.
Of the parking lots, plural.
Well, do we want to include grounds? I mean, of the grounds, parking lots?
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Sure. Well, the only thing is that if you scroll down right here, you're simply talking about enforcement mechanisms that are specific for cars.
That's true.
If the next one down
Other means.
Well, I don't know, whatever there is, I don't
No, but I mean, other means would open it to other stuff.
No, no, other means would be other, other potential punishments for people in their cars. Like we're going to key your car.
Oh, I was thinking other means could mean other enforcement means not listed here, like installation of gates and barriers.
Right. No, so it does, but it's all about the misuse of this particular section is specific to the misuse of parking lots.
Well, should it be, should it be broader? Prohibited uses of the, of library property? And then that does include everything.
Yes, because people have been known to camp out in the bushes on library property.
Yeah.
Just the parking lot. So
All right. So prohibited uses of library property.
Yeah.
That's fine.
One concern I'd have there is it says shall be addressed. I'm wondering if we're leaving us to the vulnerability of somebody doing something wrong. And they say, well, there's no sign there that said I can't do it.
So we could change shall to may.
Well, maybe what wait a minute.
What? We, we almost have to have this kind of stuff for the parking lot though.
But what happens if you notify the person, oh, you shouldn't be doing this. And they say, oh, sorry, sorry, I'm going. You wouldn't have to, should we, yeah.
You, you have to enable the police to be able to police the parking lots when the library's not open. Don't you have to have some ability, you know, give them some ability?
No, but nothing that we do precludes what they can do. This is only about.
Setting up the policy.
What the, what the library director should do. It's not about what the police can do. I mean, the police can come on any county, well, they can come on any property.
Gary, what's your hesitation here?
But I, I think we have to for sure spell it out for the parking lot. Otherwise, there, there, there could be no enforcement. But for the other things, I wouldn't want to spell it out. Be- because.
Yeah.
That, then the, the, the person could hide behind the fact that it wasn't spelled out. I, I'm not making myself clear in a way.
So how would you, looking at what we have now in enforcement A, how would you change it?
I, I guess may, because, because the, the director's going to do that, right? We, we, we don't need to force the director to do those things.
Right.
The director will do it.
And if I could just go back, it's really what we've said there all applies to a parking lot. I mean, ticketing, towing, those are all cars. Barriers. So I think it should go back to, um, like the library parking lot there personally.
So I'm, I'm happy to do that. I think other means does give us the opportunity to have other for it to apply to library property in total if you, if that's what you want to do, but I don't have an opinion one way or the other about whether to make this, you know, specific to parking lots.
What you're saying is there might, a problem might develop where somebody's doing something in a certain place continuously. And you say, we better put a sign up there in order to take care of that.
Right.
But if someone has parked on the property, on the yard, but are we covered? Because if it just says, oh, it's only on the parking lot.
Yeah, okay.
All right. I mean, library, you know, or you could list all of them.
Why don't you say library parking lot and grounds? I can't remember what's some of the other.
Well, Christine, aren't you saying that it says property? So the other means refers to property.
Yeah. I, I'm saying that the other means would not include whatever we would do for the parking lot. And, and I can give you a specific example. And this happens fairly frequently that we have trouble in the dumpster areas because they're enclosed. So people go in there as a, to seek like a windshield. And that's not in the parking lot. But it's on the property. And so what would we do? There's a sign there that says do not enter. So the sign is already there. It would just be a matter of asking for enforcement. So is it? Is anybody?
So what, so what are we at? I mean, I, I still think it makes sense to have a, a special paragraph related to the parking lot. And then have a paragraph related to everything else.
Sure. That's, I'm totally amenable to that. If that's what folks want to spell out, I'm happy to do that.
Sounds good.
So. Um, hang on, let me get this right before.
Yeah.
Um, I don't know if this will, I don't want to do that. Okay.
Well, what would be different for the, for the library property? That we wouldn't, that wouldn't be a sign.
No, you're right. I mean, you're right. You're right. You're, you're right. I take it all back. I take it back. Undo, undo, undo. That's fine. That makes sense.
Yeah.
I think this is very, very tight and elegant. My, my hat is off to Miriam for being able to do this on the fly and to Gary for putting the, the new structure in place.
Me too.
So my question though, on the next paragraph B, I think we have a, we have an additional little letter down here.
Yeah. It's because of this one.
So, so the next paragraph B, what does it mean? The person in charge, if the library staff observes any person who's been notified of the above policies acting in acting, wait, if the library staff observe any person who has been notified of any of the above policies? No, no. How do we know if they've been notified of the above policies? What, what, what I think you want to say is that the library staff observes any person who's acting in violation of this policy, this whole policy, our whole policy. The person in charge shall contact library administration. So I'm a little unclear. Who's the person in charge and whose library administration? Are you saying if library staff observes any person acting violations policy? What is it that you want them to do?
So this is the one where each branch, when it's open, has a person in charge. And they are sort of the manager of that facility. And this gives them permission to act without library administration's permission if it's on a Sunday or a Saturday or at 7:30 at night when there's nobody there. This was kind of a hard one battle a couple of years ago.
And it's necessary.
My, my concern here is that I, I think we should give the, the manager or the staffer the ability to go up to a person and give them notice. You shouldn't be doing that. And then, then the person can say, oh, okay, I won't. Or, or, but if you do it this way, they, their only choices to decide whether or not to prosecute, so to speak.
So that's an excellent point and generally speaking with people who are camping, we've been told in very direct language by the police not to approach them.
Yeah.
Because they often get worried about their possessions being taken and so they'll become aggressive.
Yeah.
That's, that's a good.
So that, that is a safety measure for library staff that you, you are not required to notify them. Now, if it's somebody, you know, selling DVDs out of the back of their car and staff feel like that's not a risk and going and saying, hey, you can't do that here. That would certainly be the best way to do that because that's the, you know, least escalation.
Right. And Christine.
So I sort of understand what's this paragraph supposed to be doing? It's supposed to be giving library staff to take action or to take no action?
Action.
To be able to call the police without getting permission from library administration.
Okay. So then it doesn't say that though, because all it says is if libraries, it didn't even say that before. If library staff observes any person acting violation of this policy.
They will notify the person in charge.
They should, is that what we're telling them? That they should notify the person in charge?
Yeah, and.
Usually that, yeah.
That's kind of standard practice in the branches, you know, pages and people emptying the book drops are usually not comfortable.
But I don't, I mean.
Miriam, Miriam, will you read in the, this exact language is in the previous version?
Right.
So will you find it and read it for us?
The original language?
Yeah.
Yeah, the original language said.
It's toward the very end.
I don't have an enforcement section in the draft.
No, no, no. It's toward the very end of policy W.
Okay, I don't have the original policy.
It's, it's two, it's the bottom of section two.
Yeah.
Okay. So Fran, you said you had it. Could you read it?
It says if library staff observes, which should be observed in the subjunctive, but sorry. If library staff observes any person who has been notified of this rule, including notice by posted signs, acting in violation of this rule, shall, staff shall contact library administration. If library administration is not available, person in charge may contact local law enforcement and follow up with administration. So.
Okay. So if you want to leave that and just change rule to policy, then that's, then that works.
So I didn't scroll down far enough. So the, the rest of the language was there. My mistake.
Okay. Right. If you want to leave the original, just change rule to policy.
The original said staff shall notify any, that person.
But I think person, it should be person in charge.
No, but, but there's that step of, like Suzanne said, like the step of the person who sees something going on and tells the person in charge or their supervisor, but the person in charge. And then the person in charge has the responsibility for the next.
So the way it reads now is still, it's just in two sections. It's in C and D, correct? The language remains the same?
It's not the.
Yeah. So C, it's actually going to be B and C, but yeah, if you want to leave it.
It doesn't have what Suzanne just said, the, and what was, what was in the original staff.
Right. That's right here. If library staff observes any person.
But then what do they do? They tell the person in charge that's not in there.
Okay. So will you read that part to me and I'll type it in?
Staff shall contact library administration, which is what we wanted to correct because it really should be. If staff observes, then staff notifies person in charge. Then person in charge notifies library administration. Well, you can leave, and then the person in charge shall contact. So you don't want to take that out.
I was just.
Notifies the person in charge.
Who?
Who, oh, I see what you're doing. Who then?
Who contacts?
May or shall, whatever, contact library administration. Yeah. You should leave observes as observes because people won't know what that means. I was being smart alecky. I'm sorry.
In violation of this policy.
Observes. Yeah, just leave it.
So did we include everything that?
Do we want staff notifies or do we have to have one of those tricky may, shall, will? Or, I don't know.
I defer to Gary with that.
What, what's the question?
Do, do we have a may, shall, will in, in between staff and notifies the person in charge?
Cause they should.
Well, we've got to give some direction. It doesn't, this is. This.
I don't understand notice by posted signs.
That means that a, a sign in the parking lot?
Yeah.
Considered notice that you're not allowed to do whatever it is that the sign prohibits you from doing. I don't have to verbally tell you that if a sign is posted there saying that you can't do it.
Oh, okay. All right. I bet you. Okay.
We, we, we want to give direction, right? So it should be shall. And then again.
We want to leave this as may though, right?
Mm hmm. I guess.
Yeah, that, we don't want to have to be forced to call the police to it.
Correct.
Correct. Yeah. They have that, they have permission, but yeah.
And should the library, should the last word be library administration rather than just administration or is it?
Yes.
That, that was one of my questions too, is do, do we have a definition of library administration?
We don't, but I don't know that we really need one. It's very clear to staff.
Okay.
Who that is. So I don't think that needs to be spelled out for the sake of staff.
Or for us.
So shall I go to the top and we read it one more time?
Yes.
I think this is really wonderful. You guys did a bang up job.
Yeah.
Should we take this slash out and put a comma? Do we care?
That's a good idea.
Okay.
Yeah. Then also an A. When you're.
Where?
In one A, it also is slashed instead of comma.
Oh, thank you. Yes. We ready to go down?
Mm hmm. Is there a period after?
So this is, maybe I'm getting too picky unique, but in D, do we want to say the library director may permit exceptions to the prohibitions listed above? Do you want to say period, the library director may enter into agreements with other public or private entities regarding use of library property? Is it obvious when we say regarding use of property, library property, that we're saying use of library properties in ways not described above or otherwise prohibited above? Or is that obvious?
Well, it's exceptions, right?
Okay, fine. Okay. Fine.
Sheila, you're, you're, there is a period here. Is that what you were asking about?
There it is. Yep, yep.
So we ready to go down a little further?
Can you just make that into one sentence and it would be okay? Cause it's kind of awkward saying library director this and the library director that. The library director may permit exceptions to the prohibitions listed above and may enter into agreement.
That's fine.
Do, do we want to leave it the way it is and say including uses in the exception to these prohibitions or something? Cause you might want to enter into agreements that don't break any of these rules.
Say that again.
There, 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 you might make agreements with other entities that wouldn't break any of these rules.
Oh, that's a good point. So, so how do you recommend we change it?
Maybe just add including something that I don't know how you want to word this. Including activities. Help me, Miriam.
I know, and I can't, may also may enter into.
Well, maybe that should be first, that the library director may enter into agreements with other public or private entities regarding use of library property, comma, and may also permit, and may permit exceptions to the prohibitions listed above.
Oh, that's a good idea.
That looks, that.
But, but the exceptions. Couldn't they be with somebody other than people you have agreements with?
I see. So. Keeping it as two sentences.
There are three different things that we're dealing with.
Right.
But in the first, you have, in the first, if you have first may enter into agreements, then you have the broad. And then the, the next part is like then narrowing. And then the, the next part is like then narrowing, "May permit exceptions."
Yeah.
Or leave it to some, I don't, I mean, I don't care.
I'm in favor of leaving it how it is.
Yeah, I think so too, because it really is two different things. Yeah. I think especially with the renovations, there'll be much more multi-use, public-private situations coming in the future, so.
That's a good point, Sheila.
Yeah.
The second sentence should stand by itself, yeah.
But, but would, would they necessarily interpret it to mean that she can also, well, I guess we've already told her that she can make exceptions, so she she can make exceptions in this case. Yeah, I, I'm sorry. I agree.
Yeah.
Okay, we're all good?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We still have to fix the paragraphs.
Yeah.
Right, it won't let me do it when we're in marked.
Yeah, okay.
Markup, track changes. Oh, wait, maybe I can do this. No.
Oh, no, I see where my, what my, what my concern was in B. This doesn't really allow the person, that the staff person to, if they want to ignore it or tell the person that you shouldn't be doing this. It, it forces them to notify. There's no discretion.
But the discretion is with the person in charge.
Well, we have, they shall.
But then they gotta, they've gotta tell Jessica too.
They could decide whether to contact.
Well, we can, we can change this to may, no, sorry, this to may.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Um, so, yeah, so can I just ask, do we have other stuff on the agenda for the policy meeting? Just because I have a four o'clock work call that I would.
No, this was it.
This is it.
All right, so our next policy meeting, we're gonna do the, um, bylaws again.
Yeah.
Christine, I, I don't know where my last version is. Can you, can you send it around again?
Of course.
Okay.
Um, let me just make sure we're all good here, changing this shall to may, and then the rest of it's all good?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
All right, I'm gonna log off. Nice to see everybody.
Thanks for your help, Miriam.
Take care. Bye.
But then you'll send this to us before the next meeting, is that right?
I will send it out this afternoon. Would you like, what I can do is I can send a clean copy that doesn't have the tracked changes, so you can just see how it reads.
Yeah.
And then I can also send you the tracked changes version so that you can see what we changed.
I like that idea because I, um, you know, I, I think it would be good for us to be able to see it.
Mm-hmm. And it would be really helpful for me if you just send it to my personal email since I don't meet with Margaret until one tomorrow.
Well, I have to send it to your other account too, but I'm happy to send it to your.
But I can't get into that yet.
Right, right. I'll send it to both of them happily.
Very, I'm sorry for the, for the.
No, that's, don't be silly. It's, it was a crazy change that we made very quickly.
I thought I'll change.
Can I bring up something about the bylaws?
Sure.
Before we, we wrap up, um, because I, I was looking a lot at the, the stuff about the foundation representative and then also about elections and officers and all that. And, and I've been working on that and I, um, and that's that. And I, I would like to continue to work on that. Having been active with the foundation for many years, I, I feel like I have a, you know, connection there. And I wonder, is it possible for us to have subcommittees that maybe of two that work on things to present to the committee to streamline the operation? Because I think, like the work that Gary did, you know, it's really helpful, but I understand about the, you know, more than two, we, you can't really do, but with that, you know, would a subcommittee be okay, um, or just an individual working on things would be the way that it would have to do, to be, and then you really couldn't submit what you thought until we had our meeting.
Yeah, I think the sunshine laws are intended to, you, you would be sort of doing an end around. The, the goal is to have a public, I'm sorry?
Yeah, and that's not my intent.
Oh, of course not. Right, right. I know it's not your intent.
Efficiently.
I know, I know. I mean, I think the fact that Gary, that, that we had had a robust discussion and we were all sort of on the same page in terms of the, the content. And, and then Gary reorganized it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I think was ideal. Now, it may have taken a long time and maybe nobody else wants to do that, but there's no reason you couldn't do that for the bylaws, or at least say, here's what I suggest for, you know, everything that has to do with the foundation.
Okay, well, I, I will do that with the, um, with the officers because that, that's part of the foundation representative. Um, and, um, I guess send that to everyone to be, before the meeting or at the meeting?
Why don't you send it before the meeting so we'll have a chance to read it?
Okay, I will.
You know, to, to see it.
Yeah, we can't have any discussion about it, but you can certainly send it ahead of time.
Okay, and then another thing that I, I had discussed with Christine in my role as the chair in terms of scheduling the, uh, the output of this committee and, um, you know, sort of getting, if, if it's possible to get a track, like that February would be the policy as consideration item. And then in March, it would become an action item. And then if possible, either all or part of the bylaws as consideration. Now, that means a question of do we want to split up? Because the bylaws is a, it's a lot. And on the other hand, it may not be that a lot needs to be changed. And, uh, because, you know, so that's your thoughts. I don't know what other people think about that. As breaking it up. For, for example, well, go ahead, Sheila, sorry.
No, I was just gonna ask, how many, how many, um, I don't have the bylaws in front of me right now. How many bullets are there in the bylaws? Like twelve or?
Um, well, it's, um.
Wait a minute, I've got it in front of me. So this one.
Ten articles.
Yeah, so what I've worked on is Article Five, uh, elections.
Yeah.
And, um, and that, because that has like four sections in it. So I've been looking at that and working on that. And so I don't know, is there any that anybody else wants, you know, we've all worked on other parts of it.
Right.
So.
Here are the bylaws.
Right. So with the Article Five, the elections, I, I, I've done a lot of moving things around. And I, um, and then I looked at it again today and I have other ideas of moving things around. So it's like, it's a moving target. Um, but to keep it, it sort of doesn't track with the, um, shills, foundation, nominations, elections, and then goes to duties, um, but so I don't know what, what's my question. I will work on Article Five and send that.
That's a very big, big one.
I've already been working on that.
Right, so you're working on it from the point of view of the foundation, because that was what what was behind a lot of our discussion, right? The, the duties of the.
And that's, and it's included in Article Five.
Uh-huh, yeah.
So I'm, I'm note to, note to self, work, work on that and send it to you all before the meeting, which is next week, I think. Or the weekend. No, whatever.
And it seems to me there was another question that came up at the meeting that had to do with attendance at meetings and, um.
We got an answer to that, which is, yeah, the answer to that is that since you guys don't have the authority to remove each other, um, there really isn't any reason to include anything about attendance, because that's really between the appointing authority and the, uh, board member.
Right, right, right. And where, where would you find that? Because, you know, if we, we probably should be able to cite where this disinformation comes from.
Well, that was the county attorney's assessment.
Okay, that's good.
Of boards, authorities and commissions. So there really isn't a place to, um.
The county attorney.
Document it.
The di, the county attorney is, is the last word as far as.
Yeah, but I mean, there isn't a place to document it in the bylaws. Like, we're not gonna say per the county attorney, blah, 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 blah.
But when it, when a discussion comes up.
Right.
We can end the discussion with, with that, because that's good for me.
For sure.
Which should, I don't know then if it's someone to think about, something in that, um, attendance of trustees is between the trustee and the appointing supervisor. Not like, not those words, but it's not, you know. It's not within our realm. I don't know if we need to, I guess if it comes up in discussion, that's all we need to be saying.
Right.
Have to put in here everything that we can't do, right?
I don't, I don't think technically we're appointed by our supervisor. I, I think we're appointed by the board.
Well, I think you're right.
Oh, so it's not the individual supervisor, you have to.
Officially, yeah.
Oh, okay. I didn't realize that.
Christine, I have another question that relate, relates to what Fran's talking about. When I put together my draft for today, I was talking with Fran about it and, and, uh, and, and she pointed out to me that we could, I wanted to include Sheila, uh, in, in the discussion.
Right.
And she pointed out that there's three people.
Right.
And, and you pointed that out today, but with that, that what you're talking about wouldn't have precluded me and won't preclude Fran on the bylaws of sending something that we come up with to everybody else, not discuss it with them, but send it to them?
I don't think it does, Gary. I think that as long as something is informational and not a discussion where a member of the public could say, I wasn't there, I didn't have the opportunity to weigh in. So their opportunity to weigh in would be at the meeting when you discuss the draft that you've sent around.
Okay.
Does that jive with your understandings of sunshine laws? I'm not, I'm admittedly not an expert on this, so if someone else thinks otherwise, please speak up.
I don't know, but I, I, but I've written down what you said, is we can send out things as information prior to a discussion at a meeting.
Yeah, I mean, again.
Say it like that.
I would do it very judiciously, because if we start, it's very easy to get into a discussion.
Yeah.
But I think if, if you say in anticipation of tomorrow's meeting, here is my draft, I look forward to discussing it tomorrow, something like that, bam, then, you know, this is just so someone can come to a meeting prepared.
Yes.
But the public still has the opportunity to, um, weigh in during the discussion at the meeting.
Suzanne, you're muted.
Yeah.
Suzanne, your lips are moving, but you're muted.
Wouldn't it go into the board packet before the meeting if it was on the table for discussion? So the public could access.
Well.
Where it's there.
I think it definitely would, like, like we have the, the, we will send out the draft of the bylaws when we're discussing them. Sheila may send out her marked up version. But the public know, like, she wouldn't be sending up a, a version of something that wasn't already publicly noticed. You know, of a different policy. So if, I, I believe that if it's the publicly noticed policy, you could send that around to each other. I'll double check on that, because I certainly don't want to be wrong about that.
Okay.
Yeah.
But it's not a bait and switch. What I think the intention is, as long as the public knows that that's what you're gonna be discussing and you don't discuss anything else, then they have had their opportunity to participate fully.
Right. And I'm just thinking, um, what we're talking about is kind of doing research, finding, finding answers that we will add to the discussion. We're not discussing it beforehand, but for people who, who are like me, who need to read bef, don't, don't think on their feet as fast, you know, they need to do their thinking beforehand or after the meeting. It's not really a discussion, it's just providing materials that will add to the discussion when we do have our official meeting. Am I, am I understanding this right?
That's my understanding as well, um, as long as, again, it's the same subject that is publicly noticed.
Right, it's not just, right, and we're not making any decisions offline or.
Right.
Yeah.
Right. Okay, and I have a couple of other issues, just quick things that I want to bring up from the last board meeting, the discussion of making the terms of office two years instead of one and various, well, I talked to one person, one trustee about it, who said, "You'd never get anybody to run for office if it were two years." So when we, when we discuss that, uh, I, you know, each of us can think, um, you know, how, about that question about whether we should change it, um, to, and the, the point being the learning curve of getting ready. And, and for me, I felt like change, you know, changing it that, that the election in June and then the person takes, takes office in July, and then there's time to learn and settle into it rather than right that minute. So that's one thing. And then the other question of whether the, the library board, the trustee representative to the trustees should be elected or appointed. And, um, I know that, that, um, motion passed, but because it was a secondary motion as part of the bylaw motion, and the bylaw motion did not pass, then that motion fell with the other one. So that may come up again, and I feel pretty strongly that it should be elected. It, it had been elected and Charles Fagan, um, started appointing. And, um, without a bylaw review during that period of time, it wasn't noticed that that was the wrong approach. And, um, a couple of, to me, it's like, if that person is representing the trustees, and if, if you will, like, the library director, it has, no one has a say in that except who's the library director. The, um, the chair of the trustees is elected and then becomes a, and I, I feel that the, um, the other one should be elected too. So that will be something to think about, because if it comes up, you know, it'll be something that we, we can be thinking about. So that's all. I just wanted to get that out, out there.
And now, so for the bylaws, just so I can clear my head, the bylaws, we're going to go through again or just the, the articles that were, um, discussed at our last board meeting? Would, are we gonna review the entire thing again, or is it just going to be those points that had been brought up?
But in the committee meeting?
Yeah.
Well, what do you want? I will, I am, I am planning to, to send to you my ideas on the article.
On Article Five, sorry.
So I don't know what else, if you want to concentrate on that and do chunks at a time.
It's not until, it's not until Article Five that my articles start turning red with all. It's not until, it's not until Article Five that my articles start printing red with all of the changes.
Oh, maybe I should share again.
And then I have some red in Article Six.
Christine, I wonder if your document, you can insert the auto text of the date so that each time it's printed, it prints the current date.
I, I didn't do auto text, but I inserted it at the bottom.
In a footer?
Yeah.
Because of I thought those dates were associated with the additions. I guess they are. Oh, okay. All right. Good. That's good. Thanks for, I get that now.
I'll update that with all of the policies that we're looking at so that we, we have the, we can at least agree on which addition we're looking at.
Yeah, exactly.
So yeah, Sheila is absolutely right that on the sort of the working copy. Articles one through four have almost no, I mean, there was this little change to superscript here.
That was.
And that's it.
They're okay.
And then it's when we start with Article Five is where a lot of
Yeah.
revisions come in.
So if I concentrate on that, does, do other people want to? Or do other people want to do another section? Other people being.
The, the two of us.
Yeah. Or we can make Mary, give Mary an assignment.
Yeah.
She's really good on the fly, you know.
Yeah.
So yeah, this is a long section, Fran, that you have, Section Five.
Yeah.
And I have already made a lot of, I've done a lot with it. So it's not that I'm going to be starting, I'm going to. I did a lot and then I like to let things sit and then go back again and say, oh no, that's wrong. Fix that.
Well, I think that you are the, the logical person. I, I did go on the website to look at you know, the foundation board, you know, the foundation bylaws and all of that. And, and it wasn't in depth, but you've been on, you've worked with the foundation now for years. So you you have experience, firsthand experience.
But as we're looking, as I'm looking at the rest of these, the duties of officers may have some revisions.
Yeah.
Meetings, probably not. Committees, committees may, but parliamentary authority? No.
No, no, no.
So it's, so it's not a whole lot of other, I mean, Fran, Fran took the bulk of the work essentially. Way to go, Fran.
She's so good.
She's great. What would we do without her?
Yeah.
My sense is that any other changes elsewhere only relate to changes that we would make in five.
I think that's a great point.
Right. What, because one of the things that I want to do after five is make sure that at every place in the bylaws, it specifies the, that the chair shall, if you look at that, serve as an ex officio voting member, because I was dismayed at our meeting when we're like, well, I think I'm allowed to vote. I don't know if I'm allowed to vote. And I'm like, okay, let's get that in writing. So everybody in the votes. So.
And I do think we should read through the six and seven and eight, just to make sure the language is clear.
Yeah, though there will still be cleanup, like making sure that, we call it the Fairfax Library Foundation and all of those, you know, corrections are made. But I think Gary's right that there could be some things that point back to Article Five, but it shouldn't be other substantive changes.
No, no, I don't think so either. The only, the only, just glancing at this fast, the only changes we made were to include online and in places that it needed to be included where, where, you know, it previously just said hard copy, basically.
Well, one of the things I thought in that, it's like, what is it? Article Six, Section Three, the Secretary of the Board, and we had changed let's see, the Secretary of the Board D and E, maintain the minutes of all meetings online. And I wonder if that should be the library website. I don't, but that's something we can talk about whether because that's where it's.
Specifically where online is. Yeah.
Yeah.
So, well, since we, we did not publicly notice that we were going to discuss this, I think we probably shouldn't.
We'll do that next time. Yeah.
Okay. We will, we will discuss all of this and Fran, you can share your research with us beforehand.
I will.
This was a very successful meeting. Great job, you guys. And I'll send out some minutes as soon as I can.
Great. Please do. And no rush until after tomorrow. When I'm back online again. Oh, my goodness. This is like a nightmare. Okay. All right. So we have adjourned. Is that what we say?
You need a motion.
Are we motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second. We are adjourned.
Okay. Bye, everybody. Thank you.
Bye bye.